Eighteen and six thirty ish, and I'm going to call the work session to order. We're going to begin with the first item on the agenda, which is a fire station plan for the town Madison area.
Okay, and I guess that I start with that. So, I went ahead and gave council something the chief Bailey had given me. So, after our work session and then our meeting and the budget where we defined exactly what, you know, council said, hey, this truly needs to be in the town Madison area, and we need to, and then we added money in for new fire station. So, that along with building twenty-three A, we went back to chief and said, chief, let's define and finalize options for the town Madison area. So, what you guys have in front of you is what he gave me. You had basically option one, which was somewhere near Toyota Field, option number two, which was somewhere near the quarry, or option number three, which was back at twenty-three A, which where we had started. With two and three, the good news with that, with what council had already supported with the Celtic Drive facility, is we already have bays there, so chief and the fire department can put their extra vehicles there housed, you know, under roof, but then they need something that would have two bays and obviously enough room like we have at the other fire stations. So, that's, that was the criteria that we started with as we, as we looked to start and move forward. That immediately brought us back to the twenty-three A area, and I don't know if this actually shows, am I using the pointer? I think I am. It don't really show. All right, so what, what up there you have is an overview of all of the Hexagon area. You got the big lake, to the right of the lake is the Wellness Center, yeah, that will be right there, that we'll be talking about later. You see the, the courts behind there, which are now the pickleball courts, we'll show that picture a little bit. You have the ball fields, and then you move over to the parking lot, and then right there where the dark colored roof is, is building twenty-three A. So, that's where we're talking about on the facility. All right, if we can go to the next one, Chris. Chris, and then another good, okay. So, in talking with, Gerald then took what we talked about and did two things. First, figured out how we would add the bays for the fire station, and you can see that we would simply add a driveway and then two bays where we would be able to put the vehicles there. One of the things, and Gerald can talk about this a little bit more, one of the areas where we're able to help ourselves financially is you don't connect the roof lines. We would have breezeway in, at least one and maybe two, breezeway to the overall thirty-eight thousand square feet of, again, what will soon to be named, the building formerly known as twenty-three A. So, that's what we are working towards in, in asking council again for, hey, do you guys, are we headed in the direction you now want us to go, and can we finalize this? So, then let's go to, he's been working with his, both police and fire, on what the interior of that will look like. And I think he did a good job of listening, so he's color coded this and have a key that goes with it, but you can see that, again, you have the bays on the, on the far left-hand side, you then have the internal fire station, and one of the things that we'll show to everybody out there too, but you guys also have something, is the costing. So, the apparatus bays are about twenty-four hundred square feet, the living quarter turnout, which is the top left pink corner, is about three thousand square feet, and those two together are around the same size as fire station three, so it meets the criteria exactly like we've had previously, and we feel like that, and he's got real numbers on building a real fire station somewhere in the two point seven million dollar range. The rest of that would then be, as you can see, bottom left-hand side is a joint training center that they would have between police and fire, areas of storage, Gerald and his team from a facility standpoint, and then you have Madison Fire and Rescue on the top side, and Madison Police Department on the bottom side. If you ask us right now, oh, and then, so, so to outfit that building as we would need to is, and, and also take care of parking lots, things that need to be done exterior wise, that's about two point four million. So, right now, we feel like all of this can be completed right at the five point one million dollar range, and in what you guys have already approved, that's going to be somewhere, I'm thinking, the four point nine, four point eight million dollar range. So, we're really close, and the good news as Gerald went through and got these numbers, we feel like these are real numbers, not just, you know, hopefully we could get the right numbers, these are real numbers. What goes in there, just to give you an idea, is groups that we'd be moving is about twenty-five people immediately for the police department, but it gives them the ability to grow into that, to have at least about forty-five people in there, and it's going to be the investigations team, the special operations team, and the professional standards team, and then again, we also will have in there an evidence room that is a secure evidence room, and am I missing anything else, chief? Gerald or chief? In there. Fire would have the ability to sleep six to ten operational firefighters, the new bay, the fire marshal division will go there, four full-time members, office space for part-time, and then also the hydrant maintenance, hydrant maintenance folks, offices for training and our safety division, offices for the EMS division, offices for the city emergency management safety officer and, and division, and then storage for not only him, which he seems to have a whole bunch of stuff, but also the rest of the department where we'd be able to house stuff there. So, as we've gone back and looked at this for our public safety annex office, we feel comfortable that we're within two hundred fifty thousand dollars of what you already have in the budget when we combine the two of those to go forward. So, I'll shut up for a minute and let you guys ask any specific questions that you want.
And council, any questions to the mayor?
What's in the middle? Bathrooms? Bathrooms.
Probably showers.
Go ahead, y'all, what's your, you get?
Please. I'll follow back. Go ahead. Is that something where it can be like a storm shelter type thing?
So, there is a new building code that the architect has made us aware of, that now when you build a fire station or a police precinct, you have to furnish a storm shelter type. So, we're looking to see if we're going to put that inside the building or an external. If we do an external, there may be some FEMA money that we would be eligible for if we made it larger and available to the community. So, we, we've got the research that, I just haven't had time to do that, the things that we have found online. You know, a lot of our communities, especially the county, have those dome types, and we have place to put that there, but we just got to do a little more research to see if we qualify for that. So, the, the middle section is the restrooms, we would have to get those up to ADA compliance, and we've already put money in there for that. There will be showers in the fire station, just like it is at all the other fire stations. Chief Gandy has requested two showers for the police department if, if they need to do that, so we've made provision for that in, in the budget also.
I think the first question I have, and I'm thrilled that it looks like we can get the fire station in that area of town, I want to clarify the issue of response times, what, there seemed, seemed to have been some confusion in terms of whether this was the right location, or it could work in terms of meeting the insurance requirements on response time.
And I'll let chief talk to that, but he's run the, he ran the response times on all three of what he gave us, and they're within, I mean, there's almost no difference in that, and it gets us almost all the coverage. I don't think any of the things that we have get all the way around to the very immediate backside of Edgewater, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct, yeah, nothing's going to get us that far unless we, you know, build something way down there right on there at Edgewater, but bottom line, especially because we're going to be moving from Celtic, this gets, this gets, this gets us just as good a coverage, really better coverage, for all of town Madison, gets us all of town Madison, and allows us the same coverage for, just about the same coverage for head and west on, on Madison Boulevard. And so, it's, since we're moving, you know, and that was some of the confusion before, is if we're going to add, if we're going to leave Celtic there and add, then it would, then it made sense, but since we're moving from Celtic, this is absolutely a good, a good spot for us, yeah.
And the joint training center here, how, how does that compare to the training?
It's really a classroom, joint, joint training classroom, but that we'll be able to put in, again, Gerald's done a great job with the whole thing, and this is one of the things both, both chief Gandy and I really like, is that we're looking to put a hundred person class on for a conference or whatever we want to do, and we're going to, we're planning on putting like bi-folding doors, wall, wall in there, and that way, if we, we can keep it, normally keep it in two, two good sized classrooms, and then when we do have a big crowd, we can just open that wall up, so, and then, so that's really a classroom, whereas our joint training center will stay at Celtic, the intended, that, that's to stay at Celtic, along with logistics and, like the mayor said, our, our reserve apparatus.
How soon can you build this? How soon can this?
I'm going to defer to the man.
Tomorrow. He does, and I, and I really appreciate chief Bailey and chief Gandy of all the work that we've put in this together. The fire station, we believe, is from today eighteen to twenty-four months. The office area, the long lead time item is HVAC units, they're eight to ten months. So, we, if we decide to go forward, what our recommendation will be is the city go ahead and purchase those, and that be an owner furnished item, so we could speed up the process while we're waiting on drawings. We believe the renovation for the office setting goes for the, for the department and the police department and office setting would be ten, twelve months maximum. We, we have talked to architects, we've got a draft of that, so we can have construction drawings in ninety days from the time we sign a contract.
Okay. And that money's built into what we already have here?
It's already, yeah, it's already covered in here.
And then some of what we're talking about there directly, so getting that done as early as we can directly correlates with then being able to make the changes here at city hall to expand what we need to here also to be able to do that.
So, will those construction drawings, are they going to size the AC units? I mean, are we?
They will, we, the office area, we're not changing a lot of the interior walls, and they'd be dividing and adding a few drops. Each one of those quadrants, so there's twelve quadrants in that building over there, each quadrant has a ten ton HVAC unit that services just that quadrant. That really won't change a whole lot. Their rooftop mounted units, like I said, we may change some ductwork around, but as far as locating the unit now, where the evidence room will be and the fire station and the base, that'll be something different. You know, we, it'll, it'll have its own unique individual items for it, so we, we would want our firefighters to be able to control their heat and cooling and their sleeping quarters individually, try to make them as comfortable as possible.
I wanted to add, add this one thing, Gerald met with our, we have a fire station design committee, so they met down there with him, talked about how we could use that space, and you know, we're the best, and so they're coming up with the internal, they will come up and work with Gerald and the architect for the internal design, so that again, we're looking at, you know, being able to use this thirty to fifty years for our, our folks, and also it's to be made, it's going to be made expandable, so if we do decide, I've talked a lot about having, at some point having two truck companies, one north and one south, so you're going to make it so that on one of the walls, one side or the other, we'll be able to expand and put a truck company in there if we need to. Right now, we're going to put an engine and a EMS squad.
So, should we go ahead with three bays instead of two? I mean, it's not.
And does HMC need a bay?
Well, there's enough room for HMC there if we need, if we need to add with this.
We, we could go ahead with three. Right now, we're currently going to price that at five hundred and two dollars square foot. There's some utilities out front, if we make it three back to the west, that will have to be moved, and I don't know that that five oh two gets us covered for everything with that, so probably two hundred fifty, three hundred fifty thousand dollars to move those utilities out of the way at this time.
Yeah, okay.
You need a head nod from us to move forward?
Please.
Can I find you a dalmatian?
Yeah, yes, I've had dalmatians before, so any thoughts?
Was that donation or dalmatian? I'm sorry, I was just asking.
If we're doing that, I want to get the police chief a smoking demanded car.
All right, well, you know, I think I have a head nod, we will move forward with this. Thank you to council for what you've done, thank you to Gerald and both chiefs and their teams for doing it, and lastly, thanks to Steve, because he kind of started this process, got most of this taken care of, we bobbed and weaved, but we're right back to where we funded this, purchased this, and what we're doing it for, so thank you for that.
And thank you too.
Okay.
For the work you've done. Okay, so next, we have another item on the campus, which is a Hexagon Fitness Center.
So, this is the Wellness and Fitness Center, the Wellness Center, so we want to start here, just to remind everybody, this is an actual picture of what those twelve pickleball courts look like, and we're thrilled with what they've done there, the lights, I mean, it's just a great facility. I don't, has anybody started playing on those yet, or no? We've waited probably till we got it kind of cured a little bit, and we'll be having a, a nice ribbon cutting ceremony here soon on those. But what it also does is it shows you the back of the Wellness Center, so, and there's another picture, so Steve, I probably do need you up here, because I know I'm going to ask a couple of questions that I won't have the answers to. Currently, I think with what we've purchased with the fire, police side, and then the pickleball courts, it's about thirteen acres. Okay. The Wellness Center and the front parking lot add about two to three, is that it? So, the total amount would be how much, nineteen? I know that doesn't add up, but I thought it was a total of nineteen.
Seventeen, eighteen acres.
Okay, seventeen or eighteen acres.
George Bush math, thanks.
Yeah, it is George Bush math. I, I thought it was a total of nineteen, but it may not be, it may be more like seventeen. With that said, the agreement that we had had to, because we lost our ability for fire and police to use the gym, is, and city employees could use this, Hexagon came back to us and said, okay, guys, our corporate offices have told us, we will sell this and sell it as quickly as we can, and we, you have the first option, and we've had an appraisal done, and the appraisal came back right at four point four or five million dollars. How many square feet? And you have a, and you have in front of you guys the, the schematic drawing, which I think, Chris, if you have that, I think it is the next one that comes up. That's the schematic of it. How many square feet? Twenty-seven thousand square feet of space. How many of you guys have been over there? No, 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 so we can obviously show you that, but the front two rooms that you have are all fitness equipment right now, the back right room is kind of a workout, you know, jazzercise, I mean, it's really nice wood floor, mirrors and so forth. All the stuff in the middle is locker rooms, the gym is on the far left-hand side, and then on the back, as you saw, is a porch with overhang, I mean, you've got, it's not screened in, but it, it, at least it's covered, a covered porch.
Three thousand square feet.
Yeah, three thousand square feet for that? Okay, so three thousand square, so, so two things as we see this, first, when they offered it to us at, they will get, and we can't, you know, I say we can't, but we, we can try, but bottom line is they will ask for the appraised price. They ask for ten percent down, and then they will give us five years to pay it interest-free for five years. So, in talking to Roger and Cory, Cory, in his budget right now, could find the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's needed for the initial payment for this year. Roger in turn would pay for the remainder of the five years, eight hundred thousand dollars a year for five years out of the fund thirty, seventy-one, which is our bond fund each year, and in turn, we would have that facility. Where we see the benefit is obviously, you know, we continue to grow, we were on the phone today and yesterday with the schools trying to continue to try to secure gym space for middle schools and high schools, which is just continuing to grow, our adult programs continue to grow, so the gym is just huge for us. Obviously, you can play indoor pickleball, but you can also play volleyball and basketball. The backside of that is where eventually, as a city, working with our schools, if we needed to build the next pool or aid pool, we could build it there, and this already gives us the things that are needed that Dublin in many instances, you know, doesn't have as far as places for people to be, to, you know, to, to go back and forth to watch the meet, but it also gives you the bathrooms that are there that you wouldn't have to build. So, we see it as a benefit, we, you know, if it seems like it's coming screaming in here, it kind of is, but that's because Hexagon is just diverse, if it doesn't have something directly to do with their business, they're selling it.
Okay. Could we have an opportunity to go and see it? I'd like to see it.
Sure.
Okay, that would be great. And I'll just say on the pickleball courts, what great foresight to have those fencing in between so that people are not chasing the balls everywhere, and that, that was, that's huge. You know what I'm talking about, Cory? Where, where there's a fence around each pickleball court, that's, yeah, one hundred percent.
I thought that was the whole corn pickleball chase, that little thing, yeah.
Do it as hard as you can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If we're going to partner with the schools, are they going to pay some, are they going, we going to rent to them, or whatever, like?
Well, at first, I don't, when I say partnering, I think one of the things, there's no partnering initially with the schools. I think as we continue to talk to the schools about how we work together on multiple things as far as funding, eventually that could be something that we do. When it came to the pool, I don't foresee the city right now jumping out and building a pool. I would see the city supporting and working with the schools to build the pool, and part of what I didn't show very well is you can see the space that's over there between what is being built next to it, there's room for it, but we would, we would need to partner with them to actually build it. I think it just gives us the ability, we can't do it at Dublin, it gives us someplace to put it where there's already a lot of the things that are needed that would save costs.
And I think they're already having group exercise classes out there, I think Hexagon already provides that for the employees, and maybe that's something we can do that would generate a lot of interest and people wanting to join for Pilates or yoga or Zumba.
Yeah, and, and part of what we're going to, we're going to need to do as a city based on the, the, the facilities that we are building, the, the community center, which I'll finish it, we had a great meeting today, Madison Vision Partners had a lot of folks there to see that, Miss Connie was there. The, this facility, Dublin, continue, we need to look at what we offer our citizens as far as a fee-based, you know, piece for if we wanted to use or open up any of the gym space to them or not, you know, there's a lot of different options we have, but, you know, I think Gerald will tell you, to buy this at that price, you know, twenty-seven thousand square feet versus what we have had to spend for others to revitalize, it's, it's in great shape, and that's why we feel like it's, it's worth bringing to council right now to talk about.
So, the public though will be able to have the exercise equipment?
We haven't defined that yet.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we have to define if that's what we want to do, or, or, you know, again, that's, if we do that, then we've got to figure out how we do that, how we staff it and so forth. Part of the agreement that they sent to us was they had, how many, was it two or three people, that they asked us, three people, that they wanted us to take over, there's no way that we would be able to take over those folks at the pricing that they're spending right now, that they're being paid, so that, there's, if, if you were to give us a head nod and say, go forth and try to finalize this contract, we in turn would need to let them know that some of these things can't happen, or at least happen at the level that they're at.
Right. Okay, one of the things that are really, go ahead, John.
Yeah, hey, I'm sorry. Hey, Paul, this sounds like an amazing opportunity. My only thing, and you and I talked about this before, is I, I want to make sure that we're continuing to invest in our parks that we already have in Palmer and those areas. We're doing great in expanding, I think, and meeting some of the, the new needs, but we've got to get back into Palmer and make sure that we're continuing to progress and improving those amenities. Over.
Agreed, I think, you know, again, this year, I know, you know, revamping field I think, you know, again, this year, I know, uh, you know, revamping field seven and eight, which, which gives us, again, more fields, and also, um, basically adding the parking in the backside where the softball is played are, are two of the key pieces.
Great in expanding, I think, and meeting some of the, the new needs. But we've got to get back into Palmer and make sure that we're, uh, continuing to progress and improving those amenities. Over.
Agreed. I think, you know, again, this year, I know, uh, you know, revamping field seven and eight, which, which gives us, again, more fields, and also, um, basically adding the parking in the backside where the softball is played are, are two of the key pieces. game. Um, we made a significant impact on Ingress Egress. Um, and so, we would see that, again, with the new elementary school out west, but also any other areas that we can work together on to make this community safer. And we continue to talk to them. And this would just be one more area that is critical for our city, where we don't have to go someplace else, and it can be done here. Again, in Town Madison, you build a pool like that, it's going to be a draw that only brings folks in there, that when they're done with this, they're going someplace in there to spend money.
In terms of the current footprint, are you anticipating any structural changes that would need to be made in the near future? Or do you think you're going to be able to walk in and use it as is?
I, I think we can walk in and use it. I think a couple of things. One, IT is eventually, either immediately or initially going to need some money to change over all the systems that comply with ours. Um, you know, the camera, cameras there, we need to make sure that they come over on our side, the internet that we're using. So, there is a cost to that, but as far as the footprint, other than the operational side, I think we're good to go with that. Would you agree? Yeah. Gerald? I think Gerald's also looked at it from a, we went to the roof, we looked at that. You know, um, they're not brand-new air conditioners, but they're functional right now. We don't see needing to change those out. So, we have looked at it from a, in good shape standpoint. And Denise Bates has been the one who's managed this, and I think, you know, she's done a good job of, of keeping the facility in pretty good shape.
What is the? So, I'm just telling her that, so, short-term, like, we buy it, the next year, what happens inside there?
When you say what, how we start using it?
Who's we? That's what I'm like.
City. And the community. The community, it's going to, there's going to be all kinds of things that the community can do, um, there with, you know, again, you know, basketball, um, the backside, all the classes that you talked about. Again, part of what we have to do as a city is figure out if we do it on a, hey, for X amount, two hundred ninety-five dollars a year, you can use these three facilities full-time, and here's what it gets you, or whether we do individual facilities. We definitely want to take care of our employees. This is, again, something that we've had a lot of, um, support, police, fire, obviously, to keep them in shape. But the rest of the city, it's a selling point now, and we also have the ability to offer you something that you don't have everywhere else.
Ideally, what is the timeframe in terms of when you would want to present this to council? When you think you could have a contract ready, and when we would be able to walk in and use it?
Uh, it's soon, because they, they really wanted it done like last month. Um, but, again, what we want to do is do it right. So, it would be this year, the end of this year. I mean, I'd, probably by the end of November, early December. It's working with them. You know, Brian already has a contract, I'm not saying contract, an outline of something that they feel like could be used.
We can put it together very quickly.
Yeah.
As, as soon as you want to vote on it, I think we can get you something.
Yeah.
How old are those units? I mean, how soon is it going to be before we have to start replacing those? Because that's, you know, it's kind of expensive, and if we're buying units for the other facility, I mean, it looks like we can start getting a, a, uh,
Package deal?
Yeah, like, I don't know.
Buy five.
This can't right.
There's not many deals these days on HVAC equipment. So, we, we looked at all the units, all the units, that building is twenty years old. All, all the rooftop in this, and there's two thirties, two twenties, two tens on top of the roof. And, and if you want to know, to replace a thirty-ton unit today is about a hundred fifty thousand dollars. You know, but we'll have to have a little money in the budget just for upkeep, janitorial service, those kind of things. I mean, that's, we'll, we'll have to work in, uh, those things. But, the units are in good shape. They, they've really done their maintenance, and I'm not standing up here telling you they're going to last for no ten years. I'm, I'm not doing that. But, uh, they're, they are twenty years old.
I guess that's kind of what I'm asking you. What's, what's the maintenance cost going to be on this each year? And when do we start putting in things, in, in the capital budget to replace them and stuff? Because what I hate to get into is us replacing a bunch of units at, you know, one time at this building, that building, et cetera. We've gone for years without doing preventive maintenance, right? You're, you're getting us to see that. So, what's that, what's that look like?
We, we can lay that out. We, I mean, we can build you a budget for that and lay out what a cost would be annually for this, the maintenance and upkeep of that building. The, going back to the twenty-three A building, that, that building has fourteen rooftop units. They replaced three of them two years ago. The other eleven are totally inoperable. They, they don't work at all. They're original to the building. They're, they're forty years old.
Okay.
Yeah.
Have we inspected this building?
When you say inspected, just, I mean, what you mean by that?
Meaning, before we buy it, have we had a professional inspected to tell us if the roof leaks or the?
We, we went through the building with our building inspectors and, and looked at if we had issues with HVAC equipment, had electrical issues, had issues with sprinkler system. And we didn't see anything that obvious. Now, we could hire a building inspector to go through and, and do everything completely if we need to, or I can give a dust and then, and let them fill out a detailed report. But we, we spent several hours going through the building, looking at everything. We didn't see anything obvious as far as a ceiling, roof leak, or anything like that. But, uh,
I don't, I don't know that you'd get, I mean, you'd obviously, depending on what that cost is, I don't know that you'd get much more than what you're getting out.
What we've already had.
And I think Dustin's, you know, he's qualified to inspect that stuff.
Yeah, we looked at the water heaters and, and ADA compliance and, and, and those type things, and seals around windows, and got on the roof and looked at, at that. So, we, we, we went through it pretty good.
I'm like more, I'd like to see.
Yeah.
See it before we, um, do that. Okay, let's try to coordinate.
Good.
So, you don't have to do it multiple times.
Right, and that would be good.
So, I guess two things. One, before, when, when we get done, if, if maybe,
Yeah, no, no, it starts then.
When we get done today, if you guys, if we, Steve can kind of meet with whoever wants to go see it, and kind of maybe see if we can't find a, a time that works for you guys this week, we, we will absolutely get that done.
Okay.
Okay. And then along those same lines, um, do we need to wait, um, to, to get a head nod to try to start working on this? Or do you want to say, as long as we see it? How do you want to do that?
I think times are the essence.
Okay.
Just need to move forward.
Absolutely.
Also, though, what, what's, what's our timeline to, to figure out how we're going to use this, other than just the employees? Is that?
Well, I can, yeah.
I mean, obviously, we have to buy it first, right? I got it, but.
Sure. Um, we can start, we will start working on that immediately and try to bring something back that way. We will start using this immediately, once we purchased it. And I think we've got the ability right now for the gym and volleyball and all the things. It'll be used every day for that. But we can bring you back something that, that we kind of put together from those different facilities of the community. It needs to be looked at anyway, and now's the perfect time to kind of revamp it based on what's coming.
And police and fire will be able to use the workout equipment, the weights and all of that, and that'll help.
Yes.
Okay.
So, we'll get it to, or we'll, we'll head nod to start the process of going back and working legally to start bringing something, and look to finalize, you know, have a discussion going forward at the next meeting.
Okay.
Good.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And the last item on our agenda is animal shelter.
Yeah, and it's a good segue from, um, the, those are the pictures. But before we get to those, I want to thank Steve and the mayor's office for allowing me to go over to the old fire station, where the current weight equipment is, and the opportunity to see it. And, um, it is in severe disrepair. Um, it's unsanitary and is, is, but that's a different story. But I do want to thank you for letting me to have the opportunity to go and see, uh, an idea I have, which was the old fire station and, um, the central office annex. So, I, I thought it'd be good, um, can we actually look at the other slide first? Okay, so this is what our animal shelter looks like. Um, you've seen it, it's about twenty feet north of here. Um, Tina and Janice have done a great job kind of sprucing it up with the plants and chairs. But I wanted you to see the close proximity of the Everstead development to the shelter. Um, you literally, um, can do a, a long jump, or a broad jump, from the fence to that, uh, building. So, those folks are going to be paying about twenty-two hundred dollars a month in rent. And the reason that, for me, that this has become more of a need than a want is the close proximity of these homes to the shelter, because as soon as those folks move in, they're going to be saying, I don't want to hear a dog barking twenty-four, seven, I'm paying this amount in rent. So, I want you to see the exterior. That's what the exterior looks like. And then if we could go back to that other side. So, to the left, that's a cat room, which is totally fine, has cages. Um, the, uh, picture in the center is the current workspace for our animal, uh, control officers. And I feel, and I would hope you would agree, that we could do much better in providing them a cleaner, um, maybe larger workspace, because it's pretty small. And then that picture to the right is a picture where you can see, um, what the run looks like. So, it's about five feet from the fence to the, um, doggy door. And then on the other side of the doggy door, I couldn't go in because all of the, um, runs were occupied, and I wasn't sure how my presence would feel, be on the inside with dogs that didn't know me, so I kept my distance. But on the other side, outside, is about a five-foot by two-and-a-half-foot cement pad. And the, the whole reason, I just wanted you all to have an opportunity to see this. We were looking at, um, between the two projects, spending about seven million dollars. So, I know this isn't something that we can financially do immediately. I just would like to put it on your radar, because we do have some opportunities with the fire department leaving Celtic, that there may be space to put a aluminum siding building that, you know, you can spend anywhere from maybe a hundred thousand to a Taj Mahal, um, on this. And so, we want to definitely spend the, the Petticoat Junction amount, not the Beverly Hills amount. So, just want you to kind of be thinking about it and thinking of an opportunity at either Celtic. When we went and we looked at the central school's annex, that would be absolutely perfect for our animal control officers and cats. But there was no outdoor space for the dogs. So, I don't know if there would be an opportunity to have something there. There's a trailer in the back. Um, I don't know if Public Works can jackhammer up some of the concrete padding to have a green space. So, I just wanted to bring this to your attention, because I feel like, once that development starts being occupied, we're going to get complaints about dogs barking. And I, I just have to be honest, we can just do so much better. This facility was built in the mid-nineties by our police officers and the Limestone County trustees, the prisoners. And at that time, we had a population of, in the nineties, of maybe fifteen to twenty thousand people. Well, now we have sixty thousand people. And so, um, and I think as our city grows, our services need to grow, which we've talked about tonight, and our opportunities for, um, our community and our, our neighbors to engage in outdoor activities. But I think we can do so much better for our animal control officers, our police department, and whether the dogs are in the shelter for an hour till they're scanned for the chip and they get to go back home because they got out, or if they have to stay seven days, um, y'all, the smell in there was just, I, I hope I can never smell that again. It just, we can just do so much better. So, I just wanted to bring this to your attention. Um, I don't know if you have questions that I'm able to answer, or Chief would be able to answer, but just something that we can look forward, um, in an email, Steve had mentioned, maybe we could look at it next year, mid-year budget, something for maybe a facility at Celtic, or, uh, I'm not sure what the plan is for Sullivan Street, for where the current old fire station is. But just want, I'm very happy and thankful that we're at least able to talk about this and maybe have a plan in the future.
Okay, mayor, you want to jump in?
Yeah, I think, um, probably the best direction I could go in talking with Chief is, and then giving council an opportunity to think through what we could do. Um, I don't think the Sullivan Street, um, location is that you're, you're kind of moving it from one place next to houses, next to another place next to houses. But I will say, in talking with Mary Beth, we don't really feel like we have a whole lot of focus as far as what we would do with the old fire station and the board of education building right now. Mary Beth feels like, um, if we, as a city, wanted to look to sell that, that someone could buy it, tear that stuff down. She feels like you can probably get four houses on that, that, you know, so somebody could buy it, build housing down there, which, um, you know, obviously, the other ones that are just right up the road from Sullivan took a little bit of time to sell, but they sold. And what I would suggest, if, instead of putting it there, if council, you know, wants to go forward with something like this, is to sell that property and use the initial monies to put the architectural piece in place and put it down on the Celtic, uh, area, based on, um, the fact that there's no housing down there.
Exactly.
And, and we could build something, you know, personally, nothing, I don't want to see anything much larger. I do want to see something that allows our folks to have better, you know, facilities. Um, but I don't disagree that we can do better. And if we're going to do it, as we've looked at it, there's a better place for it, which is Celtic, and there's also an opportunity to possibly get it started. And if we can get the architectural piece of it taken care of, I do have confidence that money can be obtained, um, through Mass Visionary Partners, that can jet fuel it more quickly for people that want to see it happen.
Wonderful.
That would be my suggestion, if we were going to look to do something, based on talking with Chief, um, and Mary Beth, as far as that property.
I agree a hundred percent. I think Celtic would be a great location. There's no housing around there. We already have the K-9 unit down there. Um, is there room? I guess is kind of the main thing. I mean, it's about two acres, that whole complex, I'm, or three acres.
You say there's room, I know. So, we do feel like there's room.
There's room, okay.
And I do also want to make sure council would know that, um, one of the areas, and we're headed down to Montgomery with meetings with several different folks on Friday. And, you know, if we have one primary ask, it is to secure funding for our police and fire training station. And this is, you know, where that's the internal side of classroom, the external side of actually fighting fires or going through buildings, you know, kind of looking like, you know, your detectives, is critical to that. And so, that's where we're going to be looking to secure outside funding this year, is to try to get that moving forward also. But we do feel like with the, um, and, and then the old Public Works building, you know, again, we're going to redo the electrical, Chief will store his, um, spare units there. They can use that for kind of a area where they're going to do their training to dress, undress, whatever. And then there is room on what you would be looking for.
that, you know, obviously, that's not something that's in any plan that we have, but just, you know, looking further down the road than when I'll be here.
So, I, let me just say that I will get you your answer to that. I'm sure there is, but I don't know how much it would take, and then what that would do, but let me...
Yeah, cause I don't, I don't know, you know, I'm, I'm just showing it's out there. Say if you take, you know, five feet away from it, and that allows you to expand, fine, but if you take ten foot away from you, from the property, then you don't really have a property that's usable, well, that doesn't make sense.
And it's a rectangle within, in the very back, there's a little piece of it that goes even deeper, and, you know, what Mary Beth was saying is maybe on that back piece, I would secure it, not sell it, just to have a buffer, but it may be something that we add that, maybe for a couple of those properties, and then ask for more of the frontage up. I, I can get you that answer. I know we're, you know, this is, we're just throwing this out there and throwing this out there.
Right.
I'll get that information, and we can bring it back.
That's a great question, cause it'd be great to one day be able to widen while training.
Well, and that, that, that area, right, that area and the area only, really, any area around the tracks, that's what's gonna stop us from, from going, going north.
True.
Okay, well, no, you're throwing it out there, I'm throwing it out there. We will get you some more information and see what we can do to possibly bring something back. Again, to me, the, the key, it's, it's, it's just property that we have that I think, you know, it, it, it had its nineteen fifty, nineteen sixty, I don't even know the last time that it was actually the fire station, but, you know, it is now probably a good time, and it would help jumpstart something that in turn, if you have a number and you have something that looks like, and you can know, hey, this is a two-hundred-and-fifty or three-hundred-thousand-dollar build, that gives you and others the ability to say, "We need help here."
Perfect.
That's great. Good discussion, John. I don't know if you're still here, if you have anything else you want to add.
Lord, are you there?
No, I'm good. I'm good.
Okay, I know there's a bit of a delay on your end, so, okay, thanks, and thank you all. Good discussion, good information.
Um, I have one more thing that I wanted to bring up, if it's okay. Um, I've been having some complaints about the noise ordinance waivers for, um, construction, particularly the construction at Publix on County Line Road. Um, the permit, or the waiver was given between July seventeenth to November twenty-fourth, from ten PM to seven AM. Publix, if y'all don't know, is right up on the property behind it, and there are homes directly behind it, and what I'm hearing is people are, since July, have been hearing beep, 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 all night long. I was unaware that there was a waiver there, and this is in my district, but, um, on the, the note, the noise permit, it's listed as District Four, which could be part of the reason why I didn't know about it. But one of the things that, um, the citizens are requesting is that we possibly review our procedures that we do this for, and then take into account that we do have citi, other citizens that are being affected by this. We want to be pro-business, but we also wanna take into account, we have citizens in the area, and this may be a burden to them. And I'd just like for us to, um, possibly sit down, review what we've got going, see if there's something we can tweak to make it better, and then, um...
We actually had a discussion about this at our, uh, department head meeting Tuesday, and I think we are looking to do what you're asking us to do. I mean, right now, we give a long, uh, window, um, we can shorten that, you know, I think, um, if, if we need to, as a lot is for concrete pores, you know, if they need to start and just keep going, but let us look into that and see what we can do. I think we can make it better, um, and, and still be pro-business, but pro-community too.
Thank you.
Okay, there's nothing else? Then, John, are you ready?
Thank you.
The third down, release ten, twelve, four.